Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please take your places. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd ask that Councilwoman Diggs lead us Pledge of Allegiance on this eve of 4th of July. Councilwoman. I ask Councilman Riley to please lead us in prayer. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Lord, we ask of you on this fine evening to offer your blessing and guiding wisdom to all of us who work to make this a better community for all concerned. We seek your blessing for this wonderful land on the evening of Independence Day, which we celebrate on July 4th each and every year. Let us through your guiding light, Lord, remember the sacrifices that our forefathers and mothers made in order that we today live in this land of the free and the brave. God, hear our prayers for all of us, all of your special children who suffer with health issues. Make them strong and well in your name. Protect those that go in harm's way in order to keep us free. Guide them home to their families and friends after the job is done. Lord God, we thank you for all you do in the name of our Savior.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Will the clerk please call the roll?
McMahon.
Present.
Eggersheth.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Trombetta. Caladrino. Perkins. Visconti. Genies. Esposito. Sadi.
Present.
Cabo. Basso. Rotello. Diggs. Ty Schultz. Riley. Saraceno. Seaberry. Stanley. Tabrisak.
Please let the record reflect that we have seventeen present, three absent, and one vacancy. Councilman Trombetta is out of town on family business. Councilman Seaberry is in California welcoming a new addition to his family, a grandchild just born. And Councilwoman Saraceno is also out of town tonight. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I would ask any members of the public that wish to address the council this evening, please limit your comments to an item that's specifically on the agenda, and you must also be a resident and/or a taxpayer of the city of Danbury. With that, at this time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Mrs. Waller. We do have a new spot to stand for the public speaking side. Please use this microphone on the side and always state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lynn Waller, 83 Highland Avenue, Danbury. I came to address you on number two, the cable rules and regulations and the cable DTV. The advisory group is going over the rules in September, and if you have any changes, if you could submit them to the advisory group before that, it would be a tremendous help. I'm tickled pink that they're on television now, and I appreciate the effort you put forward to get it there, all of you. Number thirty-five, I'd like to speak on charter revision as well. Mr. Mayor, please keep it transparent. I know you have told us it is going to be. I was a member of the last commission, which was not transparent. There was one public hearing before, but we were on the commission, and we never discussed or considered any of the suggestions made in the public hearing. I am sorry, but I have a very sour taste in my mouth because of that experience. When there is a strong mayor or a stacked commission, the public is neither heard nor included. I am not speaking of your administration, I am speaking of the one under which it happened. Please don't let this charter revision go that way. Danbury will suffer if it does. The charter should be a bible by which we live, not a book of suggestions. Thank you.
This is Waller. All the way in the back, so you had your hand up first, and then this is helping. Why aren't we sitting near the mic and I have to walk around the room? I'm gonna try to get another one over here.
My name is Ken Guckler, I live at 89 Payden Arm Road in Danbury. I am a taxpayer. When I first talk about item number seven on the agenda, I find it kind of funny and hypocritical that we're gonna readdress the parade ordinance in an ad hoc, especially requested by Joseph Cabo, who stood up here and tore apart the people opposing two meetings ago, revisiting this and sending it back to an ad hoc and having a committee look at this because of all the things that were addressed by the public and the concerns. And now that the parade ordinance has passed, we're now gonna go backwards and we're gonna relook at the whole issue. I think we should've looked at the issue and sent it back originally two meetings ago, and we would've avoided a lot of conflict and a lot of hurt feelings. So I hope that this ad hoc does come about, not like the sexual predator ad hoc, which I believe we're still waiting to hear from, which that also is something that was passed, yet it has multiple problems with. So I would look forward to that being addressed. The next thing is issue number five. I agree with the idea that if the city is gonna have donated property to organizations, that yes, we should make sure that it goes for that organization, not the profit. Unfortunately, I wish this was done back in 2004, not now, when the Elmer's Diner situation first appeared. I mean, this is three years too late, so I hope that that is something that we look forward to having done, and I would kinda wish that we would stop having these after the facts. I know we have to wait till the problem, but we need to look forward and try to look at what's gonna happen before it actually does happen. Number thirty-six, the Hallis Farm Market. I only wish in those points that I understand it's the area that they want to improve is right next to a stream. I believe the stream is Capitola Brook, which eventually flows into Payden Arm, which eventually flows into the Still River, which is a contended area. I would wish that any of the improvements that they want to do along the banks of the stream or anywhere in those areas be reviewed by EIC, that maybe looked at for any environmental issues that may come up, any fertilizers or any kind of weed control that they're gonna do, that it doesn't affect everything downland, because many of our neighbors and myself have been fighting to save that very corridor that this is gonna eventually lead into. I would also ask that, given that this looks to be an act of altruism, that we keep it as altruism, that they're doing this to clean up the area and make it nice, but not make it for personal gain somewhere down the line, whether they want to use the property for something down the line, that they do have to come back, and that the public does have a hearing on that, because there are other farm areas -- oh, I'm sorry, I'm ignoring you, I've got my shoulders here. There are other farm store areas that generally use Payden Arm Road, and this would be an unfair advantage, so I would ask that you look into that as well. And the last one is item number one. I just wanted to clarify, I've been reading a lot of the attacks on Mr. Genies, and I don't think they're appropriate in regards to this ad hoc on number one. I've read a very slanted letter to the editor in the Danbury--
Mr. Guckler, you really gotta keep your comments to what's in front of us when you've been a letter to the editor, tax aren't really here. So if you wanna discuss Mr. Curran's capability on the council, by all means, go right ahead. Well, then I'll finish my comments there. Thank you. Thank you for your time. This is helping.
My name is Christine Halfer, I live at 8 Settlers Hill Road. I just have a couple of comments this evening. On the request for funding for the television broadcast, like many people, I'm delighted this broadcast is actually happening.
You're a star right now.
Pardon?
You're a star right now.
You're a star. But as far as the part-time positions, I hope that first consideration will be given to the two people who have given so generously of their time to put these meetings on the air over the past year, Ivan Elsime and John Newman. I'd also like to speak to President Cabo's request for an ad hoc committee to review the parade ordinance. Like many people in Danbury and like a bipartisan majority of the council in May, I think that if we're gonna have this ordinance, it needed to be amended, and so while, as you know, I would've liked to have seen that sent back to committee in May or even June, I'm delighted that it could happen tonight, and it would be nice if it were not only a bipartisan majority, but unanimous decision by the council. Thank you.
Any other member of the public which should address the council this evening? Seeing none then, we'll move on with our regularly scheduled meeting. We have a number of announcements that are available. First of all, July 13th is Mike and Joanne Caladrino's wedding anniversary. Michael, congratulations. God bless you. And July 19th is Mary T's birthday. Congratulations, Mary, and Michael, and send our regards to Joanne. There's also a number of events that you see in front of you on the events and announcements. Those are by no means all the events that are happening in the city of Danbury. Again, if there's other things that you might be interested in, certainly contact Wendy in my office. Also best times, things like that, to go to some of those events are there, and we appreciate your participation, counsel, in any of those events. I also wanna take a moment to introduce our new Director of Finance. He joins us this evening and has spent the day meeting with key department head and staff. I told him he only has to come to this part of the meeting, and then he can zip back up to his home. He's got about a three-hour ride ahead of him, but he's spent a good working day here getting to know the organization and the people, and so I know this council will welcome him and certainly looks forward to working with David St. Haler. So David, you can get to stand up and-- Thank you, we appreciate it, David. Appreciate you hanging around tonight. Mr. St. Haler starts his position July 16th, will be his first day at work, and his first council meeting will be in August. And certainly, council's encouraged to come in and welcome him once he begins his official tenure here, so have a good drive back. I also, as mentioned by a couple of our speakers, we are broadcasting live tonight on Channel 24. There is a schedule that we negotiated, which means that we broadcast all day Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then we get, I believe it's eight hours on Saturdays, and this will allow us to use some of the evening hours, which we didn't have before, before we had ten to three. So certainly encourage the council to look at that, and the meeting is being taped as well, and it'll be rebroadcast from time to time as timing permits. In addition to that, we're still kind of learning all of the equipment. We certainly have a lot of learning to do, but we had a pretty good success over the first two weeks of getting things up and running, and if you've turned to Channel 24, you've seen that. In terms of the council, just make sure that you turn on your microphones before you speak, otherwise we will not pick up the sound that's going across on the broadcast. Just a general friendly reminder to use your microphones if you wish to be recognized. I also wanna publicly thank, as some of the speakers have done also, Ivan, I see Ivan Elsime back there with his hands in his pockets, and John Newman, for carrying the ball over the last about eight months in broadcasting, and we appreciate your guys' help and nice job. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, that pretty much wraps up the announcements for this evening. Mr. President, the minutes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the City Clerk's office.
The motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Eggersheth. Are any deletions, changes, or alterations to the minutes as presented? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor accepting the minutes, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Majority Leader, leave the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent calendar for January 3rd, July 3rd, 2007. Four, receive the communication and accept the grant of $125,550 from the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board for the Summer Youth Employment Program. Six, receive the communication and authorize the transfer of $282,495 from the city's contingency account to facilitate funding of the adopted police union contract. Twenty-three, receive the communication and approve the resolution to authorize the City of Danbury Police Department to apply for and accept funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for the 2007 Labor Day DUI Enforcement Program in the amount of $11,250 with a local match of $3,750, for a total of $15,000. Twenty-five, receive the communication and approve the resolution to approve the City of Danbury Police Department to apply for and accept funding from the United States Department of Justice for the Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $28,199. Twenty-six, receive the communication and approve the resolution that Mayor Mark D. Bowden be authorized to execute and file applications, contracts, and agreements on behalf of the City of Danbury with the Commissioner of Environmental Protection for state grants and loans available for the nitrogen removal project. Twenty-seven, receive the communication and approve the resolution that Mayor Mark D. Bowden be authorized to execute and file applications, contracts, and agreements on behalf of the City of Danbury with the Commission of Environmental Protection for state grants and loans available for the Westside Sewer Interceptor Projects. Twenty-eight, receive the communication and approve the resolution as recommended by the Office of the Corporation Council. Twenty-nine, excuse me, receive the report and adopt the resolution and ordinance as recommended by the committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. What's your pleasure, counsel? Excuse me. Nope, we missed a page.
One missed a page, wait a minute.
Keep going, Madam Majority Leader.
Okay, thirty, receive the report and adopt the ordinance as recommended by the committee. Thirty-one, receive the report and adopt the ordinance as recommended by the committee. Thirty-three, receive the report and adopt the resolution as recommended by the committee. Thirty-four, receive the report and adopt the resolution as recommended by the committee. Thirty-seven, receive the report and approve the recommendation of the committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Think we got it now?
We got it now.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Cabo?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
The motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Riley. Any discussion about the consent calendar? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor of adopting the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Ed Hackley-Porch, Appointment of Councilmember-at-Large.
What's your counsel? Councilman Cabo?
Your Honor, thank you. At this time, if the council would so indulge it, I would like to waive the reading of the committee report and make the recommendation that Mr. Curran be appointed as a council member here in the city for Councilman-at-Large.
The motion's been seconded by Mr. Visconti. Sorry, Mr. Rotello, he's very good at throwing his voice. Any discussion about Mr. Curran? Anybody wanna abuse him a little bit before we give him the secret handshake? Seeing none then, all favor Mr. Curran's appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Phil, congratulations. This time, I'm gonna ask Corporation Counsel Yaman, I don't know which one, to swear in Mr. Curran, and then he'll be seated. Phil? Repeat after me, Phil.
Aye.
Aye.
Philip J. Curran.
Philip D. Curran.
I can't read with my glasses. Philip D. Curran. Having been duly elected, appointed--
Having been duly elected.
--a councilman-at-large of the city of Danbury--
A councilman-at-large of the city of Danbury.
--to solemnly swear--
To solemnly swear.
--that I will faithfully discharge the duty--
I will faithfully discharge the duty.
--of said office--
Of said office.
--according to law--
According to law.
--so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Curran, we have you down there next to Councilman Riley. Councilman Seaberry will be down there, that's a good starting front line. Mr. Cabo has an agenda for you, we expect you to read all of it right now, there's gonna be a test later. And appreciate it. We know you've been briefed and certainly have seen the agenda, so we appreciate your participation. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Certification, funding request, DTV. Dear members of the county council, as many of you are aware, we are in the process of setting up our own system for taking and broadcasting public meetings. Over the past several months, this has been done with a small group of volunteers. Based on our assessment of the work that will need to be done to cover all the meetings and the level of training necessary to operate the new equipment, it has become apparent that we cannot do this without hiring part-time staff. I have spoken to Danbury High School Media Department about using some of the students to help us with this project, and we are developing an intern program for the fall, and respectfully requesting $5,000 from our contingency fund to pay part-time salaries to help broadcast meetings. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Cabo?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and approve the transfer of $5,000 from the contingency fund to help pay for part-time salaries to help broadcast the meeting.
The motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Genies. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanna say that I am very happy that we are now going to be not only televising, but broadcasting, which is live broadcast, of these meetings, as well as expanding to other meetings. It is something that myself and other members of the council have requested for many months, if not some years at times, and our volunteers, I hope, will continue to remain here as well in order to record our meetings and put them on public access as they do. I just had a couple of questions or clarifications. My understanding is that right now primarily Danbury High School students are the individual students who would be eligible, particularly through the summer, and that that is based on the fact that they have a media department and a program that trains students on similar equipment. Could you just elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. Danbury High School is currently operating the Danbury Public School Channel, which I think is 25, primary public access. They have equipment, they have character generators, they have cameras, and they have a course of study similar to the Business Department or to the Science Department, where students can enroll, and it's a technology-driven department, very unique to the area. Not many other high schools have a similar program like that. So we approached them in the springtime, I did, I had discussions with the superintendent as well with the primary faculty member who runs that program about creating an extern shift program in addition to receiving some kind of compensation through the summer months, also receiving school credit for broadcasting the meetings and for doing all of the ancillary work and the editing that goes with it in terms of putting on the characters and sort of, getting them ready to broadcast. So that's generally the plan, it's very much a concept in nature, and we still are gonna use some of that money also to hire an adult that will oversee and manage those individuals as well, in addition to the faculty member from the high school. So there's a little bit of work that has to be done internally, but our initial assessment of how much time this is gonna take in terms of broadcasting all the meetings, particularly EIC planning, zoning, one of those things, I'm gonna need some resources to do that, and we may have to have adult camera people and production managers as well. Comcast has a list of rules that we've received, and we reviewed, and we have to have a producer and some other things that go along with that, so that's the general concept of the plan.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I may follow up, your comments lead into just a couple of questions I had. One with regard to possible adult, as you said, as a part-time employee, is the city gonna put out a public notice with a job description, how will the parameters be set forth, and how will notice be provided? Then the follow-up is, with regard to the rules, has the city adopted, do we need to formally adopt the rules that Comcast puts out in order to proceed with this, or is it something that the executive can adopt unilaterally?
Based on, you know, we just received the rules yesterday, and based on my quick reviewing of those rules, it did not require the legislative body to formally adopt them, but they are requirements in order to broadcast, and they're, I believe, policed by the Comcast, the Cable Advisory Board. However, in terms of the employment process, we'll follow our normal protocol and employment. You are working with children, so you'll have to undergo a police background check, FBI fingerprinting, our standard employment process that our department director personnel can attest to in terms of what that would be. So there will be sort of an open process, and we'll pick the best candidate.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Further discussion, Mr. Tabrisak?
Thank you, Your Honor. Until the position is filled, are we gonna pay Ted?
We're not gonna pay Ted. Ted has been ordered in tonight, who's running the camera for those people at home, and what we wanted to do too was have several people, though, have knowledge of how to operate the equipment, so you didn't have just one person you had to rely on. So Ted's been thoroughly trained on most stuff. We still don't have a title generator, which is an additional, I'm not gonna tell you how much that is, we'll talk about that in the spring after I buy it, but it's expensive. But to do it right, and to do it the way we wanna do it, we're gonna need to do that, but I know we're not paying Ted any extra. Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Your Honor. I too am happy to see this process move forward. Will the part-time opportunities be extended to other students, Henry Eric Tech, Westcon, North of Buck Valley?
I think we'd have to make an assessment of what kind of programming they have, and certainly if they wanted to participate, we might be able to do that, but it'll have to be a similar program to what Danbury High School has, with an all-encompassing media program, which links computer generation, character generation, animation, as well as broadcasting, so kind of a unique major they have there. But if there's similar programs, sure, why not? Any further discussion? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds on the funding request. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Communication, collective bargaining agreement between the city of Danbury and the local 801. Dear members of the county council, I am very pleased to present to the council a proposed agreement between the city of Danbury and local 801, IAFF. Representatives of the city and the union engaged in good day negotiations to present an agreement that would greatly benefit the city, the fire department, and the residents of Danbury. A substantial majority of the union membership grasped by this agreement on June 20th, 2007. A copy of the agreement has been called for your review. The revision to the original contract language has highlighted in bold type. The agreement includes a two-year extension of the current contract, which would have expired on June 30th, 2007. In addition, it provides for the appropriate increase in overall on-duty manpower to be effective with the placement of engine 26 into active service. The agreement also addresses the impact of the civilianization of dispatching upon this increase in manpower. Your vote in favor of this agreement would produce positive effects for the city, the fire department, and all those who live, work here, who are fortunate recipients of the highest quality service provided by our fire department. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Okay, Mr. President, Mr. Cabo is gonna be recusing himself from discussion of participation vote, Mr. Curran, Mr. Visconti, and Mr. Johnson. Let's hope there's not a fire tonight, anyway. We're gonna give him a second to leave the room. At this time, what's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Danbury and the local eight oh one, International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO.
If you're seconded by Councilwoman Bassa, is there any discussion about the proposed contract extension? Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I feel a whole lot more comfortable about voting for this if we had someone from the eight oh one present. I thought it would be part of the process.
Okay. Um, I will tell you a signal that they're not present is probably a pretty good sign because they're pretty happy with its extension. And, uh, I believe the vote of the union was about, um, two to one in favor of this extension. Three to one. I know our, our labor council, Siran Murray, is here, and she just corrected me. But, uh, generally speaking, certainly isn't a prerequisite for us to vote on this tonight. Any further discussion?
Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Alls in favor of adoption of the contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Uh, Madam Clerk, item four with consent. Oh. Uh, oh, right. Unanimous of those members present in voting with four individuals who recuse themselves. Okay, let's put out the fire. Just couldn't resist, I'm sorry. Item five, please.
Communication. City land donated to nonprofits.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make, I want to make a referral to an ad hoc committee in Corporation Council and Director of Planning.
That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman McMahon, and Councilwoman Esposito. Item six was consent. Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Communication. Request for ad hoc parade ordinance.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Calendino.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee to include the Corporation Council and Chief of Police.
That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilwoman Trumbetta, Councilwoman Saraceno, and Councilwoman Esposito. Item eight was withdrawn. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Communication. Other post-employment benefit trust agreements.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to send item nine to an ad hoc committee including Director of Finance and Corporation Council.
That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilwoman Diggs, Councilwoman Negashet, and Councilwoman Rotello. Madam Clerk, item ten, please.
Communication. Donation to Dress for Success Program. To the Honorable Mark Bowden and the County Council. Each year, the Division of Social Service and Welfare has participated in the Western Business Volunteers Program called Dress for Success. Local businesses, nonprofit organizations, and city employees adopt elementary-school-aged children and use the donated money to purchase school supply items for children in need. Each year, this effort is coordinated by Catherine Kanasiewicz, who collected the donated items and matched them with the children. This year, the city of Danbury employees were asked to contribute money so that the necessary school supplies could be purchased based on the child's requested school supply list. I am pleased to announce that the city of Danbury will be adopting six children this year from Mill Ridge Elementary School. I'm requesting that the County Council adopt these sincere and generous donations from the city employees in the amount of one thousand dollars. I would also, I would like to thank those individuals who participated in this effort and to Catherine, who orchestrated the Dress for Success Program for the city of Danbury employees. Thank you. Amy H. Budnick, Director of Welfare.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Negashet?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, accept the generous donations from the city employees, and send appropriate letters of thanks.
Second.
That's been made and seconded by Councilwoman McMahon. Is there any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item eleven, please.
Communication. Donation to the Danbury Emergency Shelter. To the Honorable Mayor Mark Bowden and County Councilmembers. The city of Danbury Emergency Shelter received a generous donation of personal items, food, and bedding from the American Legion Auxiliary Unit Number Sixty and the American Legion Post Number Sixty from Triangle Street in Danbury for the veterans living at the city of Danbury's Emergency Shelter. In addition, Ms. Yvette Benjamin from Fifty-Aiken Street of Norwalk and Ms. Betty Batista Warrington from Posse Drive of New Fairfield also dated, donated personal items and food for the city emergency shelter. The city of Brookfield Social Service Department provided a donation of food to the city of Danbury Emergency Shelter. I am requesting that the County Council accept these sincere and generous donations. Sincerely, Amy H. Budnick, Director of Welfare.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to receive the communication, accept the generous donations, and send the appropriate letters of thanks.
Second.
Question made and seconded by Councilwoman Perkins. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item twelve, please.
Communication. Donation to the School-Based Health Center. To Mayor Mark D. Bowden and honorable members of the Danbury County Council. On June first, two thousand and seven, the Tribune of Connecticut Newspaper held a celebration at the Ethan L. N., both honoring Celia Basilar, editor of the newspaper, as she celebrated her fortieth birthday and serving as a fundraiser benefit for Danbury School-Based Health Centers located at Broadview Middle and Danbury High Schools. During my many years working in the public health field in Danbury, it has been my experience that the broad community, including health and social service programs, business, government, corporations, and general public, have demonstrated a strong spirit of collaboration and sheer passion of improving the health and well-being of the residents of Danbury. The spirit of camaraderie was clearly evident during the most celebratory event, which raised nine thousand dollars for our health centers. I would like to request that you recognize and accept the contributions made by the Basilar family and the Tribune of Connecticut staff and by many individuals and businesses in the greater Danbury area. Their generous, their gracious generosity of monetary donations and gifts for our silent auction will significantly support the health center's efforts to improve the health and well-being of Danbury's children and families by enabling us to reduce circumstances which acted barriers to access to care. The complete list of donation and contributions linked to the school-based health centers is attached. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. From Melanie Espenjor of Clinic and Medical.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman McMahon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donation of nine thousand dollars to the School-Based Health Center and send appropriate letters of thanks.
Questions made and seconded by Councilwoman Cabo. Any discussion about the donation? Uh, Councilwoman Chaney.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I just want to recognize, I did attend that event. And it was definitely a, uh, a professional-run event. And I just want to also thank, um, the Director of Health, Scout Roy, Andy Budnick, and also Melanie Bonjour for doing a fantastic job in assisting to raise those funds. So, again, thank you.
Councilwoman, any other discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item thirteen, please.
Communication. Donation to the Department of Elderly Services. Dear Mayor Bowden and members of the County Council, the Department of Elderly Services has received the following donations for the performances by both the cellmates, which is the senior center band and the senior center chorus from the following. Cross X Ridge, seventy-five dollars. Please accept these donations and transfer the above seventy-five dollars into line item five zero zero two dash five three one one Professional Services. Thank you. Respectfully, Susan M. Simaniel, Director of Elderly Services.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Cabo?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and transfer the seventy-five dollars into line item five zero zero two five three one one Professional Services and send the appropriate letters of thanks.
Second.
That's been made and seconded by, you know, a tough one. I got to give the draw to Mr. Chaney. He was, he's, he made the second there. Um, I also would like to make a request to the Director of Elderly Services. Let's take these cellmates and put them on the road because they're always making big bucks for us each meeting. I have to tell you. It must be pretty good. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. I have a motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item fourteen, please.
Communication. Request for sewer, Butternock Lane Neighborhood.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to refer to a neighborhood meeting with Seventh Ward Council Representatives, Director of Public Works, and a thirty-day report from planning.
Seeing no objection, this is so ordered. That is now required. Uh, item, Madam Clerk, item fifteen, please.
Communication. Request for sewer, Home Place.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to send item fifteen to an ad hoc committee including Director of Public Works and a thirty-day report from the Planning Commission.
That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Calendino, Councilwoman Basso, and Councilman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item sixteen, please.
Communication. Request for sewer, three Concord Street.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman McMahon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with Director of Public Works and a thirty-day report from planning.
That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Calendino, Councilwoman Basso, and Councilman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item seventeen, please.
Communication. Request for sewer, twenty-nine Clapham Ridge.
It's a pleasure, Councilwoman Bassa. That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Calendino, Councilwoman Basso, and Councilman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item eighteen, please.
Communication. Request for sewer, Johnson Drive.
It's a pleasure, Council.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to refer this to a neighborhood meeting and an ad hoc committee with Director of Public Works and thirty-day report from planning.
Uh, that ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Trumbetta, Councilman Riley, and Councilman Perkins. Madam Clerk, item nineteen, please.
Communication. Request for sewer, six and ten Sheridan Street.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Negashet?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc with the Director of Public Works and a thirty-day report from planning.
That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Riley, Councilman Seaberry, because he's not here, and Councilman Perkins. Madam Clerk, item twenty, please.
Communication. Request for water, six and ten Sheridan Street.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Negashet?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to also refer this to an ad hoc with the Director of Public Works and a thirty-day report from planning.
That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Riley, Councilman Seaberry, and Councilman Perkins. Madam Clerk, item twenty-one, please.
Communication. Request for sewer and water, one eighth Fairfield Avenue and fourteen Morton Street.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilman Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to send item twenty-one to an ad hoc committee including Director of Public Works and a thirty-day report from the Planning Commission.
That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Riley, Councilman Seaberry, and Councilman Perkins. We'll try to do them all in one day, Councilman. Madam Clerk, item twenty-two, please.
Communication. Request for sewer and water, Reynolds Road.
It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will make a referral to an ad hoc committee with Director of Public Works and a thirty-day report from planning.
That ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Riley, Councilman Seaberry, and Councilman Perkins. Poor Bob. Madam Clerk, item twenty-three was on consent. Item twenty-four, please.
Resolution. Victims Advocate Law Enforcement Grants. To, um, Mark D. Bowden and the County Council from Dan Garrett. Attached for your review is a resolution that will allow the city of Danbury Police Department to apply for and accept grant funding from the state of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management. This grant will provide continuing focus on improvements of response to domestic violence and enhancing victims' services. The total grant is just fourteen thousand dollars. Covers, uh, July first, oh seven, through, um, September thirty-fifth, oh seven, and requires no local match. Attached is a copy of the application received by this office for your review. Please contact this office if you have any questions. From Dan Garrett, Assistant Director of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure, Council. Councilwoman Cabo?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and approve the resolution to authorize the city of Danbury Police Department to apply for and accept funding from the state of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management for the Victims Advocate Law Enforcement Grant in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars.
That's made and seconded by Councilman Riley. Is there any discussion related to this grant? Mrs. Taverstack?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to, um, Chief Baker, if he can respond.
Chief?
I noticed, Chief, that this, um, grant begins on July first. Has the grant been awarded?
Depending on your approval, they will award it, yes.
Um, thank you. And through you, Your Honor, uh, it appears to be a thirteen-week grant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, uh, could you tell us what happens after the, after the thirteen weeks?
The Vale Grant, uh, originally came to Danbury about three years ago. And they funded us fully for three years. Uh, in the spring of this year, they notified us that, uh, they're going to wean us off the state funding. And we have to make a decision locally whether we want to continue that program or not with, uh, City of Danbury funds versus the state funds. The original grant was to cede the program in the western part of Connecticut. And we were one of three cities that were demonstration sites for this particular project.
Um, and through you, um, and what will happen at the end of thirteen weeks?
State's willing to fund us for the rest of the fiscal year at the same level the city of Danbury is willing to fund the program in the, uh, oh eight, oh nine fiscal year. In other words, if we want to commit the twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars next year to the program, they're willing to commit the twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars for the remainder of the oh seven, oh eight fiscal year.
And, uh, through you, Your Honor. And if the city isn't willing to, does the grant end on September thirtieth of two thousand and seven?
That's correct. The program will end.
Uh, and through you, Your Honor, the thirteen-week grant says we will have two police officers working two eight-hour shifts per week. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And is there a particular shift that's of concern in our community, a particular day or our time of day?
They vary the hours based on the needs of the program, the needs of the advocates, the needs of the community.
And, um, in addition, it looks as though, um, the city is committed to revamping the general orders, policy and programs, updating the domestic violence general orders, programs and policies for the city?
Most of that's been done in the prior three years. Most of that's been done in the prior three years. We have established a real good working relationship with the Women's Center of Danbury in those three years, and jointly we've updated the policies. And the whole update will be part of our accreditation process that we're currently undergoing right now.
And through you, your honor, does this include providing VOA visas for undocumented victims of domestic violence?
I'm not entirely sure how well our advocate has been trained in that particular program. I've heard of it, I'm aware of it. We have had numerous incidents of domestic violence involving undocumented people, but I'm not sure what level of training they've received. I can't implement that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion about the grant? Mr. Rosati.
Thank you, your honor. Following up on the three, your honor, to the chief. With regard to OPM providing additional funding, if the city will go forward with funding for the next fiscal year, how would that be communicated to the council so that a commitment can be made in order to secure those funds in advance of actually adopting another budget?
My guess it will be part of the budget process for the oh eight, oh nine fiscal year. That'll be part of our request to the mayor for budget funding. I think it's a worthwhile program. I think it's something we should continue. I'm just not sure at what level we can afford to continue it at.
And one more question, if I may, your honor, through the chair, through the chief. What is the deadline to notify the Office of Policy Management with regard to our wanting to continue this commitment going forward?
They wanted to talk to us sometime this summer, July or August, about our anticipated plans for the future.
And that's the reason I was asking the question with regard to budget process, and it wouldn't be beginning until after a time when they want to speak to us. I don't want to speak for all the council members, but I'm sure there's support for funding and for going forward. But would they require some sort of written commitment ahead of time, or just, you know, a good face statement that we want to continue this program?
I don't think they'll require a written commitment. I think it's just a good face statement, and the mayor and I have already discussed it when it first came up in the spring.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor. Thank you, chief.
Further discussion? Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. All's in favor of the grant? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay. I's have it. Motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-five through thirty-one were consent. Madam Clerk, item thirty-two.
Report in ordinance, energy tax credit.
Councilman Cavill?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make the request to the council that we waive the reading of the committee report, and I'd like to make a motion that we receive the report and adopt the ordinance as recommended by the committee.
That can be made and seconded by Councilwoman Basso. Is there any discussion related to the report? Mrs. Tabersak.
Thank you, your honor. I think most council members remember there was a lot of discussion at the public hearing which was held on the 25th of this month. I'm very concerned about the high number of low-income elderly homeowners who didn't apply for this energy tax credit. I believe that the assessor and I kind of agree that it's about 200 people, and I understand that the mayor's office sent out a notice to some population on May 1st, and whether...
Counsel, we sent out two notices. And not to some population, we sent out notices to those individuals.
Simply, your honor, referring to the documents that are here on the dais, I believe you left a sample, that the letter stated May 1st, and the deadline for applying is May 15th. Now, I don't want to characterize the elderly population as not being able to manage their affairs, but I do think that sometimes they require more time and that there is perhaps some confusion, because these people who didn't apply, applied last year for the state program. And there is some possibility that they might have been confused. What is this paper? Why are they asking me for this information again? That concerns me that the number is so high, because they could actually benefit from this credit. And I use the number 200 and imagine that all of them were couples, and I think it comes to $70,000. And I think that that's not a lot of money that we're talking about, and I'd love to see us as a council just administratively grant the low-income elderly whose income information we just got last May. I don't think they've all won the lottery. I think they benefit from this tax credit. And the other thing is, is we have the money in our supplemental motor vehicle account. We haven't spent it all, and it's not a great deal of money.
Let me just say to that, there were actually two letters that went out extending the application deadline to May 31st. The statute says you have till May 15th, but administratively, we opted to give folks an additional two weeks. So there were two letters that were sent directly to each of those individuals that are on our tax list, and I would caution people not to spend the supplemental money since the State of Connecticut in their most recent budget didn't fulfill their full requirement of funding, so we're going to need some of that supplemental money to offset some of the cuts from the proposed budget of both the Appropriations Committee and the Governors' Committee. Having said that, we are now well into the fiscal year, and it would be very difficult for us to administrate or to do something retroactively when tax bills have already been sent out, and we've provided multiple times the opportunity to reach out to people and try to get them to sign up for this. Certainly, there's no reason why we couldn't send out another letter notifying people again of this program, but their credit would not take effect until the oh eight, oh nine fiscal year, and we'd certainly be willing to do that, or at least call through the 200 names and see. But you might see people have moved on for a variety of reasons, don't want to take advantage of the program. That might be beneficial, at least to reach out to those individuals. Mr. Tabersak.
Thank you, your honor. But my other concern is that the application that we just did this year is for two years. So to me, what I'm saying to other members of the council is these 200 low-income elderly property owners don't have a chance to apply until 2009. Is it a two-year application, your honor?
We would accept applications before May 15th, or before May 15th of 2008 for the oh eight, oh nine fiscal year, so you don't have to wait two years to apply for the program.
I'm sorry. I'm disappointed that we can't administratively grant these low-income homeowners this particular credit. I think if we can give Danny Bertram a tax credit, we can certainly give it to these folks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay. I's have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item thirty-three and thirty-four were on consent. Item thirty-five, please.
Ad hoc report and resolution, Charter Revision Commission.
Mr. Cavill?
At this time, I'd like to ask the council's indulgence to waive the reading of the committee minutes and to receive the report and adopt the resolution as recommended by the committee.
Second.
That can be made and seconded by Mr. Cavill. Discussion related to the, I'm sorry, Mrs. Basso, discussion related to Charter Revision. Mr. Rosati.
Thank you, your honor. As one of the members of the public spoke about Charter Revision, transparency is the key to success, but also keys to success are heavily based on the executive branch, the council. I think personally, though, even more so, the membership of the Charter Revision Commission, the nine individuals who will sit, conduct meetings and hearings, receive comments from the public, from members of the council, from the executive branch. Based on my concerns with regard to how Charter Revision proceeds, I think so much is based on who those members are, and as I understand, will be voting on a resolution that will have the names of the members that will be proposed to the council sometime within the next thirty-plus days. Then I'll reserve my support for Charter Revision going forward until such time as I've seen the members and can vote on that resolution. So at this time, I will not be voting in favor, but certainly reserve, of course, the right, once I see the membership, to support it at that time. I thank you very much, your honor.
Further discussion? Mrs. Tabersak.
Thank you, your honor. Through your question to Corporation Council, please, I cracked out my charter and code of ordinances, and I wonder if you could just explain the difference between the charter and the code of ordinance? I know this is Charter Revision, but it was only 42 pages long. It had eight sections. If you could do a little...
Certainly. The charter, if you will, you should think of as the equivalent to the Constitution on a local level, and the code of ordinances are the laws made pursuant to our Constitution, if you will, which is our charter. So hierarchically, if there's such a word, the charter, of course, is above, takes precedence over any ordinances that we might enact. Is that...
Well, I have two other questions through you, your honor. Does revising the charter affect the code of ordinances?
It could. It depends on, of course, exactly what portions of the charter are affected. For example, if there's a specific charter provision that requires, that's enabling legislation for particular parts of our ordinances, I imagine we would have to have conforming amendments to the ordinances, code of ordinances.
And one final question. Is there a penalty in the charter for violating the charter?
Well, there are penalties throughout the charter in specific parts of the charter for violating those specific provisions.
There are?
In some cases, there are, yeah.
Yes.
What is the penalty for violating the charter?
Well, it depends on the exact incident and what happened. There's specific parts of the charter which say, if you violate this particular subsection, this shall happen. There are other parts of the charter that are silent, that don't say anything about any consequences. That'll be part of the discussion that'll go along with the commission about should they adopt a uniform enforcement policy related to any revisions of the charter. That might be a very good discussion that the commission should have.
Also, in a sense, a penalty for violating the charter would be that the effect of your actions might be null and void. That's a penalty in effect.
Thank you.
Mr. Rotella, you had your hand.
Thanks, your honor. Through the chair to Corporation Council, briefly amplifying Councilwoman Tabersak's point, it is a little vexing on occasion going through the charter and seeing a lot of shall do this and shall do that, but not seeing too many things that delineate what happens if those things that you shall do aren't done. And I'm wondering if that, since the charter seems to be ripe for that, I'm wondering if that was done on purpose, or these things were dropped by squivers' errors, or this, in general, do we see this in community after community where they instruct things that have to be done, but are fairly silent on penalties for not doing those things? And I have one other question. Thanks.
Folks, let me just interject here. This is not a discussion about what the charter should have or doesn't have now. It's a discussion about whether or not we want to move forward with Charter Revision. Those are great questions.
I'll withdraw that question, your honor, because that's fine.
Mr. Rotella, I have my answer. I just don't want to make sure we don't drive off into a ditch of debating the current...
Right. We don't need to get into that. Councilwoman Tabersak brought it up. I think we're on the right page here, but I do have a question through you, and this goes to the part of actually rejiggering the charter. If you could explain to me, and that was on the ad hoc, we got them just a little bit, but also to the folks at home, the voters, how the selection is going to work, the selection process is going to work for choosing the people who will actually be in charge of changing the charter. I know that, I guess, the two town committees, I believe the Democrats and Republicans, will choose members.
What we've done is we've approached both town chairman and said that we would like you to appoint or recommend three Democrats that would be willing to serve in this commission. We've approached the Republican town chairman and asked likewise, and then we would advertise for three independent or unaffiliated folks to also participate on the commission. We do have recommendations that I've received from the Democratic town chairman. I have not yet heard from the Republican town chairman, and we're going to advertise as soon as the council decides to move forward with this for the unaffiliated or independent folks that would want to serve on that. Generally, in the past, even that hasn't been transparent, and that's one of the reasons we want to, you know, we're trying to engage all parties in this process. I will say that it would be a disqualifier for somebody who is a candidate for office to serve on the commission because of the intensive time that's going to be involved with this. It's going to be a very intense commission, which will be meeting every couple of weeks through the next eight, 16, or 15 months, to be able to look at all the issues that we've been brought up tonight related to the charter. Everybody's got great ideas. The department heads got great ideas. The public has great ideas, so they're going to have a lot of work to do, and I don't think we can really have people that are... Sorry about that. That are distracted with other political issues that are going on. We're really going to try to keep this as low-key and as intensive as possible, and with as much transparency as we possibly can add to it.
If I may have followed up? Yeah, okay. So I guess my question now would be, who gets, if the town committee chairs get to make the final selection, pass it on to Dearhill, who will make the final selection for the independents? How will that be filtered?
We'll drive that out of my office, in the sense that we'll advertise, we'll put it up on the website, we'll accept resumes, we'll interview people, and say we think these three folks are well-qualified for this particular project, if you will. Those names will then be forwarded to you in the form of a resolution. Certainly, if the council is not happy with the resolution, they can vote it down if they don't like the membership. Again, this is the most transparent we've ever had, this process, and Mrs. Waller hit the nail right on the head in terms of what has happened before in the past, and this is going to be a very intensive project, and I just want to make sure that we've kind of looked at every rock and checked every person out, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Visconti, and then Mr. Sheeney.
Thank you, your honor. As pointed out in the ad hoc committee report, 1977, and then a small revision in 1990 was the last time that the charter was actually visited. This council has sat through new ordinances, and now we're looking to appoint people to look at some changes, which I personally feel we need to make some changes in the charter. So I'm sure that the people that are appointed will be above board. It still has to come back to us. It has to go to public hearings, so everybody's going to have some say in this whole thing by the time it gets adopted. Having said all that, I intend to support the ad hoc committee report. Thank you.
Councilman's exactly right. Everybody will have a bite at the apple. No question.
Thank you, your honor. Just so we, to avoid any confusion with the vote that will happen, I guess to you of the Corporation Council, this will require a two-thirds vote of this council sitting or this council as a whole?
It would be fourteen votes.
The same construct as voting on a land acquisition, so it's fourteen. Mayor should correct, it's fourteen votes. Standard, in other words.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
There'd be two in the negative, Councilman Rosati and Councilwoman Tabersak. That would be thresholded out of positive votes. Madam Clerk, item thirty-six, please.
Ad hoc report, Hellis Farm Market.
Mrs. Basso?
Yes, your honor. With no objection, I would like to waive the reading as we all have copies.
Okay, motions. Would you like to adopt the recommendations of the report as well?
Yes, adopt the recommendation of the committee.
That can be made and seconded by Councilman Negashat. Discussion about this particular issue. Mr. Visconti.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions that I made through the chair to Corporation Council regarding the license agreement that we received this evening. Under witnesses, the first paragraph where it says, "Dutify the premises and for authorized farming activity." I know you're not a farmer, Bob, but could you explain what that actually means?
You mean the phrase authorized farming activity? What's intended there is anything you're allowed to do in general, not just on this specific parcel. So in other words, in conformance with all the applicable zoning and other regulations.
Would that include erecting some kind of a greenhouse or something along that line?
It could, yes. As long as you meet all the other, including in the case of a structure like that, building codes and what have you, but that's not what's intended at this time.
What it does say in the license agreement, Mr. Visconti, says that said licensee must obtain all necessary prior approval for the placement or erection of structures or fixtures or the use of set up beyond the specific unauthorized area. So if there were some kind of building, for example, that was on there, that would be a great risk to Mr. Hellis, because this license is only good, can be revoked in thirty days' notice, which means you'd be out of, you know, a greenhouse. And obviously, you'd have to get the applicable building permits, and you'd have to be within the zoning regulations as well to do that, but I just wanted to know.
You just stole my second question, but that's okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Further discussion about the agreement? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay. I's have it. Motion carries unanimously. With that, I believe item thirty-seven was on consent, and Mr. President, item thirty-eight, please.
Your honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the departmental reports, as all members have copies and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Second, that can be made and seconded as any discussion on department reports. Start with Mr. Riley, and we'll work our way down. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, your honor. I'm not sure if this person is here, Maureen Singer. Oh, thank you. Very noteworthy and for the public record, I would like to publicly praise Ms. Maureen Singer, our in, who is the Community Health Coordinator, for receiving the prestigious Nightingale Award for Excellence in Public Nursing, dedicated to her service to the Danbury community for the last 20 years. So I really would like to, again, commend her for her superb efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, and congratulations to Ms. Singer for her great work in the Health Department. Mr. Rotella.
Thanks, your honor. Through the chair to David Day. Mr. Day, as you're walking up here, I'll just explain the background. We have not had any... We have not had any rain in several weeks, and I'm wondering how we're doing on our reservoirs. And also, if Mark Miller is here, he could speak to the situation in the woods if we're approaching a dangerous fire closure.
He's not here, but Mr. Iadrola may be available. Mr. Mark Miller.
I mean, it is the Fourth of July, and people are sending off firecrackers all over the place.
Especially at your house, I think.
I don't want to see...
It's a big party going on.
I don't want to see my house or anybody's house burned down in the woods or anything, so...
The levels for the reservoirs should be included in your report, and David will just go over, but just to let you know, we monitor the levels of all of our reservoirs every month. Sometimes when we get into a drought situation, we get monitor a lot more frequently. We make decisions on what to do with pumping from one body of water to the other, depending on what we're seeing is happening with a drawdown, so just want to assure you that that is what we monitor. David, what you doing?
Yeah, as of July 2nd, just the other day, we took our readings, and we're at 87.7 percent. And historically, comparatively, usually around this time, we're around 89.5 percent. We're right in the neighborhood of 10.
And Mr. Iadrola, how are we doing in the woods?
We're still in the woods. No, we're...
Always a comedian in the crowd, so...
We really haven't seen anything like what you've probably been seeing on TV in this area. We're still seeing groundwater levels pretty high, so, you know, obviously, we're not getting into a situation where we could potentially have a hazard where everything's drying up. Everything's still very green. I'm sure you're starting to notice some of your lawns are starting to die off a little bit. We're extremely happy because we're gonna slow down our mowing, but that's where we are.
But in your opinion, if I may, through the chair, with the increased usage in the woods from the camps, the Boy Scouts, and things like that, we don't have to employ any restrictions at this point?
At this point, I don't see that happening, quite honestly, and, you know, I could touch base with the Fire Department to see if they actually have any concerns where you would limit that type of activity, but right now, I haven't seen anything that would alarm me.
Good, thank you, both of you.
Mr. Rotella, Mrs. Bassow?
Thank you, your honor. This would be to Antonio, and I was reading the Sydney project lists, and on page five, Jensen's Mobile Home were approved of water and sewer quite a few years ago. I noticed this is not applicable. Why are they not continuing, and why is there not being nothing done because of the flooding that's happening over there, and with the sewers, you know, once they flood, they go into the Kenosha. Are they going to be building? Are they gonna be putting in water and sewer, or is nothing being done?
Let me just find my, I have an updated list for sewer projects.
It's...
Actually, David brought up a good point. That sanitary sewer system actually ties into the West Side Sewer Project, which is a project that's really been discussed since 1981. So all of the approvals that you've been granting over the last four or five months for easements is gonna allow us to actually install and construct this project. So this is required since it's downstream for them to actually construct and tie in. So that project, as soon as this gets built and certified, obviously, they're very eager to tie in.
Thank you so much.
Further discussion on department reports? Mr. Chanise?
Thank you, your honor. Again, I just wanted to, Chief Baker and this, the Police Department itself, I've been noticing that on the traffic enforcement, I just want to give you kudos for a job well done, as I've been noticing over the last four months that year, the number of traffic enforcements has almost tripled, so I just want to congratulate you and your department for a job well done, and I just wish you just continued your good work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Tabersak?
Thank you, your honor. Chief Baker, can you hop back up? Do you collect any information on ethnicity or race in your traffic enforcement?
Yes, we do.
And one other question. Your reports don't include information about youthful offenders or the types of, the number of arrests or the types of activity. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, if you'd like me to include that in future reports, I'm sure I could gather that information for you, that's not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion on department reports? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Before we break, there's two committees that are gonna be sunsetting from the June 2006, item 28, and from the July 2006 meeting, item 8. That's item 28 from June of '06, and item 8 of July '06. Other than that, I extend all the rest of the committees, and I want to stand a motion to adjourn. Motion made and seconded, all's in favor, adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Admissed.
We adjourn.